Third of fifth items is curriculum, course proposal. Jill is here, isn't it?
Yeah.
Julie, are you doing it too?
Uh, we're, yes, we're co-presenting.
So here to just bring a course per adoption to you. The course would be called Intro to Ethnic Studies here at the high school. Julie Verhagen would be our high school teacher that would be teaching the course. The huge benefit for us as a school district on the why for wanting to bring this course to our students is, one, it is an elective course. So again, one that is not a requirement for students to take, but one of interest is something they can take. It would give them dual credit. So that means they would receive English BHS credits with us towards graduation.
I have a credit because it's a semester.
And then they would also receive three UW transcript credits that would be considered Gen Ed credits for them that could trans through Parkside that then could transfer to any UW system school in the state of Wisconsin. So again, that course would be considered as a Gen Ed course or a UW system. And as those in a four-year school, there's always those Gen Ed classes that students have to take. So this would give them that opportunity to take care of some of those credits here in the district during this school day within Burlington High School and, you know, under the supervision of Julie. There's four things according to the policy that we need to share with you that I'll go over those just quickly and then Julie will continue from there. This class would be offered to students who are in 11th and 12th grade. The objectives for the class are the exact same objectives that would be on the actual campus if you were to take this class at Parkside. You can see those objectives on page two of the handbook that we shared with you. And then again, the why of the offering of this class. This class, it really allows for us to offer the ability for students to take a course that shows them multiple perspectives, differing lived experiences, and really that understanding of their own identity in the global world. Julie then, the final item to be able to share with you as well is the resources that will be used for the course, and Julie will cover all of that.
Sure.
And whatever else you can share.
So we have to guys emphasizing the fact that I actually have had some experience teaching general that in the English course through Gateway where the students could get Gateway credit. So I had this opportunity to be able to do something for UW system and I'm quite excited about, you know, presenting this for students. So my little bit of background, let's see, I've been here for 20, almost 22 years and I was also a graduate of Burlington High School myself. And I've taught a variety of different courses over the years. And so, and currently I'm teaching journalism and women's writers. Many of the courses that I taught already had, had units in multiple perspectives. This one fills a void, I think, in a way that it is a high level four course. Again, unelective, that juniors or seniors would be able to take for college credit and also graduation credit here. But it does fill a void in the sense that offering different discussions in multiple perspectives and diversity. So to call, talk a little bit about the course, it's really four main, actually, you know, if you're looking at the syllabus on the front page, really ethnic or racial groups that are the focus, but they're not the only ones that are going to be discussed. There's lots of different, different units and excerpts that we're going to be looking at through basically the main text, a different mirror. So it's just the perspective of. And in this sense, another book that's the, I guess, required reading for the course because most of them are going to be choice books was, if you're familiar with, When the Emperor Was Divided. Just to give a short little bit of fiction, historical fiction based about what really happened in the Japanese internment camps from four different perspectives. So it's really eye-opening for students. I know that I've had several that have read this as an option for a literature composition course. And I know that it was one that they said was very impactful for, for them because they weren't even aware really of what had happened. So, but through this lens and through the different perspectives and books and historic history documentaries and other nonfiction and fictional texts, it's a way to discuss and to talk about similarities and differences and our identities as a, and how that culturally, what does it make, and how does it make up, you know, the United States. So the focus really truly is kind of coming together for the discussions and to be reflective in writing about. So that's what many of the assignments are really, is a lot of reflective writing that covers the different units. A few of the other choice ones, if you, would you like me to talk about them briefly? Just go through each of them? Okay. This is one, the only one actually who is not, I would say, an American author, and that is Trevor Noah, Warner Klein. And this one will be reading excerpts of, if you're familiar with comedian, he's on late night show, and his perspective in what it was like to grow up in apartheid and so on. And yes, he's using humor in a way that touches young adult readers, young and high school level readers. My World Lit currently does have that as a whole option choice. Another book called Come Up, yes, it was written by Angie Thomas, who did write another very famous one that you might be familiar with. But this one is really focused on a girl who has to overcome some odds. She's in poverty now and she had a father who was very famous, well, about to be famous musician, and she's kind of got some stereotypes to overcome herself to be able to make it into the rap musical. Dear Martin, some may be familiar with Nick Stone. This one is another choice book for one of the units that we look at, really is about a young man who has written to Dr. like, written a journal to Dr. Michael Feeney Jr. and then deals with some of his own personal situations where he's dealing with the justice system. Whole in My Life, as Jack Ganpost, you can see that, sorry, but there's different racially authors who are from different racial backgrounds because we're trying to promote different perspectives. This one is actually an Irish Hispanic author, and he makes a big mistake when he's young, right out of, right out of high school, and he ends up going to prison. And then he becomes a writer and really turns his life around. And he explains his story of his life. It's a memoir. Read the Animals. This one is dealing with really family and basically from Puerto Rican and white combination family. And the three brothers who kind of all are fighting for who they are and where they fit into in their world. Also another one that does deal with that as well. And The Woman Next Door is really pretty much a conversation between two women, one who is African-American, one who is white. They live next door, they have lots in common from being widowers and retired, but they don't like each other. And then there's some things that happen in their conversation to whether or not their friendship can, can overcome some of their differences because they have similarities. And the last one actually is very interesting. It's also a nonfiction. Most of these were fictional except, well, actually there's like half and half. This one is a nonfiction book, and I don't know if you're familiar with Outliers. Many of you in business, they have been already, you know, reading this. Actually, I was introduced to this by my husband. And it's really the story of success and how surprisingly it can, can deal with like some, some interest. I'll give you an example that might be the best way. For instance, there were a lot of pilots from Korea and their, their airlines were statistically high in crashing. They couldn't figure out what was the difference there. And they looked culturally at what was perhaps something that happened and what was going on. And the way that leadership is not questioned, so the captain of the airplane would not be questioned by those underneath them with, within navigation, actually was one of the major factors in more of their airlines crashing, their airplanes crashing. And when they corrected that and they looked at that, that's when things began to really change. And there's other examples of like, I think, of a hockey league and why so many people from the, you know, born in a certain month are professional hockey players versus the rest of the year. So it's really kind of an interesting, very, very different kinds of excerpts there for students as an option. Sorry, I'm just rambling on, but if you have any question or anyone wants the Barbo book to look at it, they're certainly welcome to do so. I did bring a copy for, for that reason, so. But as I said, most of these would be choice books too, depending on what the student was interested in reading about, other than the core text, which I don't have a copy of. I only have a digital copy of that one, and I'm still in the stages of reading all of that. It's a 500-page book, but we will not be reading all of it. We're reading excerpts or chapters of that that we would be doing with a different mirror. So I don't know if there's any other questions.
And again, this is in collaboration with the University of Parkside. So Julie has been working closely with the professor that teaches the course on site to ensure that the course is mimicked fairly closely to as if you were to take the course at the actual campus, that our students would still receive that same three credits though taking it here with Julie as their teacher. So again, looking for the adoption of Intro to Ethnic Studies for the high school so that we can put it into the course selection booklet for this fall as a option. Again, if the course runs or not, will be dependent on the number of students who would show interest in the course and in taking that.
Can I add one last interjection, Jill and Julie?
Of course.
Just to give information, because what we're excited about is the partnership again with a different university now also adding UW Parkside to the list. As you know, last year at Burlington High School, we had our students earned a total of 1,853 college credits through these dual credit type programs. 444 students last year earned 1,260 credits through transcripted courses that our teachers taught the classes because they worked with Gateway in the same manner. They meet with Gateway instructors. It matches my course, they're 85% confident, you know, and the course will admit, will allow that, so the students take that. We have the Vanguard classes here right in the lab behind me. We have 87 students last year that earned 183 college credits without ever leaving our campus either. Partners in Education is Pi, that's with UW Whitewater. It's the same relationship we're trying to establish here with Whitewater. Ms. Spidler, besides teaching her AP English, also has a master's degree in English, so she's allowed to teach. Kids can take that class and they can either take it for the AP class or they can take it for the UW credit. The students have to decide on how they want to do that. Last year, 31 students took advantage of that and 93 credits were earned. And then we also have CAP, which is the same thing, it's just through UW Oshkosh, and that's Mr. Nye, Advanced Public Speaking, as well as Mr. Gribble with the Advanced Accounting classes. 32 students earned 102 credits. And then you throw in the current Star College Now and Early College Credit, who goes in October and then you do it in March for us. Last year in the fall, 25 students registered for 43 courses at five different colleges earned 117 credits. And this last spring, 31 students registered for 53 courses at four different colleges and earned 128 credits. So that's where that 1,853 goes, not even getting into the AP classes where 221 students wrote 364 exams. As you know, we have one of the highest pass rates in the area, about a 70% pass rate. So again, they're earning college credit too, it depends on the college they go to. This Parkside class would be another one that's more aligned with the Pi and the CAP classes that we would be able to, again, hopefully continue to find some other ways to give kids the college, experience college rigor without having to drive like some of our students do with the Star College Now and Early College Credit. Get some of Gen Ed out of the way. Did you have to go through like a certification program? You said you're working with a UW Parkside professor.
Well, I have my master's degree already, and then I also have a degree in journalism. And there's in the field of actually ethnic studies, yeah, because it is a general education course, not an English course, I didn't have to have an English master's degree. And I probably will be, I mean, I know I have to do that through Gateway where I took a number of classes through their, what, Red Hawk Technical College. So I may need to be doing that as I go. That's something that actually we'll be exploring, meeting with the woman who's in charge of their program and the professor who I would be working with. If this was to pass, we would be meeting next week to kind of go over some of those requirements for me and.
It looks like it's offered as a half-credit, so is it a half semester, it's just a semester course?
It's a semester course offered as a half-credit. So basically, meaning it could run a couple of times actually, it depends on how many people would sign up for it. But yes, it is a half a credit that would be an English credit for our school because it does fit with our learning objectives within an English course, but that it would work as a three-credit course through the UW system because of the rigor and the matching objectives.
It'd be a tough course if we have college courses, it's a semester course for three credits. Does it, I know a lot of colleges require a ethnic studies or a multi, hopefully, does it, yeah, it's pretty universal now, does it fulfill that requirement? Schools or not necessarily.
We didn't really ask UW Parkside of that.
To be determined, maybe, yeah, depends on the school.
Right, probably depends on what school you're wanting to go to if the ground's slippery or not.
Well, and again, as we know, that they're really starting to play nice with each other. I mean, they, the other UW schools as well as the technical college, as you know, the general studies degrees at Park, you can take your general studies in science and arts at Gateway, and then you will, those will all transfer seamlessly into any of our UW schools in the state of Wisconsin, which is huge cost savings for some families because you're paying the technical college price versus the UW price and that, and it'll allow kids really to get that flavor of college, stay home and, you know, commute and save some money too, until then they can finish up if they really want to go on to the four-year degree. That would allow that to happen. So I would, I would imagine, that's a good, it's a great question to ask, but I would think that it's accepted in any of the UW schools as well as other state schools. UW credits transferred easily through other states and, you know, I would think it would be accepted because of the title and what the course is about.
Absolutely, with like objectives that are, and articles that pass that most schools would have. But we could confirm that too, but.
Is this our first ethnic studies course that's been offered here at the high school?
Well, actually, yes, sorry, and we mentioned, I know that in the past, I don't think we, I had at points years ago, a course, African-American Lit, World Literature is a course I currently teach, and that's.
Women writers.
Women's writers, with the perspective, you know, anything ethnic gender issues and offers that are women. But, so I've had experience teaching those courses over the years and, as I said, in my units of study that are offering these perspectives, I think even that's my experience too as a journalism teacher, is we continually talk about current events and, and look at multiple perspectives and making sure you're analyzing sources. So that, I feel very comfortable with talking about different points of view in the course and not judgmental way.
But no, we have not had a usual, no, not this year.
Other board members have questions?
I guess I'm just kind of curious about the rationale with Trevor Noah. He's more of a political pundit and comedian as opposed to maybe someone that has more, I guess. I mean, I'm not denigrating his experience, but I mean, there are people out there like, you know, Robert Woodson, you know, Carol Swain, Thomas Sowell, Shelby Steele, people like that, that probably would offer a more unique perspective.
And again, this one was one that I was honestly trying to look at supplementing because I knew that we weren't going to use all of the text that they were, because it's a 500 and some page book. And it may be more of a book of choice option, so not necessarily just excerpts here from stories. And why Trevor Noah? Because kids do know who he is, because he is famous, and because he can reach them in a way where I'm not that funny. You know, I mean, it really, it's, it's just the different perspectives. And honestly, sometimes when you're talking about racial issues, it's a little easier to talk about something in another way. So it brings up the discussion and maybe a little less anxiety.
Jill, or anything else? Other board members? Anything else for Julie or Jill?
Could, are we, is the game plan to look at other authors? I politically, I mean, personally, I do have a problem with Trevor Noah, considering that we as a school district have put so much emphasis on fairness in the conversations. Anybody listening, watching Trevor Noah knows that he is one-sided. He is completely one-sided. So in the object, in the objectiveness of being straight down the middle, I would, I would not like Trevor Noah to be part of that, that author.
Even as a choice. I'm only asking because yes, there are other options, certainly that, one of the things that I know that we didn't have, that I hadn't gone through to look at yet was a Native American perspective specifically with the book choices. And so I've looked at, for instance, Code Talker, that was a novel about the Navajo Marines in World War II.
Excellent movie.
And so, so I'm not, if that was the one hand up for the course going or not going, I would be fine with it not, I mean, certainly, I'd like to offer choices for students to read, but I would be fine not having it be part of like the, any kind of whole group discussion.
Well, I wouldn't necessarily, I guess I wouldn't necessarily say pull it, but offer another side so that it's more balanced and more fair. I mean, literally from a political standpoint, which we hate that it ever becomes that, but in all honesty, it kind of is. And when you're choosing a political pundit comedian from the left side, if we're going to choose sides, and not offering someone from the other side to counterbalance that or to counteract that, to give a different perspective, that is leaning one side.
There'll be other readings, I mean, it may not be a book that would be offered in a perspective too, so just as part of the course. So, but I guess that is a good point, so I'm not, I'm not stating that. I would do it as for the fact that it was, you know, his story, not necessarily his comedic or his late night work.
But you cancel. I don't think you can really separate one from the other because I understand his story, I really do, but his story versus, you know, the part of where he is now and what he does on TV, I mean, I think, I don't know, I just, I just would hope that you would have some other offerings that come from the other side.
And there probably will be a few other course books, choices wise, added into the mix where students can pick from, you know, to be a favorite or a term.
The core, the reason why there's also potentially additional books that would be added is because she continues to work with the professor and as the course evolves even on campus, then there's other books that the professor introduces that then she says, oh Julie, this could also be an offering that you could use, you know. So we can update you with those too if you would want us to.
So clearly you said that Trevor Noah book was on his experience throughout apartheid.
Yes.
So you're looking for a book?
No, it's not, not necessarily trying to find someone that also experienced apartheid, no. But I'm just saying, because when you say Trevor Noah, personally, I did not, I did not know his story. So when I looked into it, it's like, oh apartheid, everybody knows about apartheid, right? But I guess the point I'm trying to make is, I just want to make sure that him being who he is and what he does now, aside from his story, that there would be something, some other author that could also be presented as reading material that would, would kind of counter that, would offer another, another point of view as well, so.
Any other board members have comments, questions?
I mean, there's obviously a lot of history in this country to cover, and there's a lot of positives though too. So I don't want it just to be negative. It's important to talk about the negative, not say shy away from that or censor that in meetings, but there's a lot of positives and success stories to come out of it.
And some of those focuses are very much there as well. And part of the, the idea is to be able to talk about some of the negatives and look at what can we, how do we not remain, really, that's the emphasis.
More time or anyone else?
Can I comment?
Yeah, you may.
I just wanted to point out that the Dear Martin book, though, fine for the age group that Julie is going to be teaching to, last year, that book was read to our son in eighth grade. Again, inappropriate book for that age group. So if we can look into, and was not listed on the curriculum. So if we can kind of figure out a way to get into these classrooms and make sure that this content is appropriate, then we can kind of clean up some of this. Because as a parent, it's not fun to be side-swiped with some of these things that are coming into our world with our child's children's education. I think that that would be great. I can't imagine we're the only parents that feel this way. Thank you.
What's the address to the book?
It's a young adult, yeah. Eighth grade would be still considered within that realm, understandably that.
Can you read some of the words in that Dear Martin book? I mean, I would be happy.
Just so you know.
Hold on, hold on. Before we start. We're not, we're not going to have a debate here tonight, so let's make sure we're staying on target here with how the format's set up tonight. We're going to have, no, I appreciate your comments, Stacy, but let's take other members of the public and again, bear with us, we're not trying to stifle a conversation here, but we really have a format where we'll listen to your comments, take them on our advisement and then, you know, maybe respond at a later date. Do you have, Eric, you have something?
Yeah, totally. I like the idea of an ethnic studies course, and I understand we're talking about 11th, 12th graders. I would encourage the board to really look at some of these books, read some of them if you can before you approve the course, because I think some of them are maybe not totally appropriate. If you do go with those books, can I recommend that there's some, or a lot of communication with parents on what, which books their child chooses, which books are available to them, and which book their, their child is reading in that class so that, so that parents can be involved, and there can be conversations at home about these books as well.
I can tell you, Outliers is probably one of the best books that I've seen. That's an awesome book. Awesome book.
That's a good book for anybody.
Yeah.
Any other comments? Yeah, Paul.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, I think we could do, I understand your concerns about what our children are learning, but I think in this small community, we raise our children and they leave the small community and it's a whole different world. And we have to realize what people have gone through in their lives and what the ancestors have gone through. And I think a little controversy and pretty much some questions about, does everybody grow up in Burlington, Wisconsin and have the same concerns? Or do we want to hear about what happened to people in Japanese war camps? Do we want to hear about these other ethnic groups that have grown up? Because this is a very small, small microcosm of this society. In fact, it's almost too small. And when you get out in this world, and I know with my own children, it's a whole different world. And if they're not introduced to this and discuss this before they get out with different ethnicities, religions. before they get out with different ethnicities, religions, races, sexual preferences, when you comfort this down, you are not ready for it. And this kind of thing will really, and I don't fault this for, for anything except that we really need to broaden our horizons here. You know, I think in a lot of ways, where I think this is, if I could take this course, I would take this one. But I agree with you. You know, I think that it's important that we don't teach our thing to children, that things are things we don't agree with. However, on the other hand, I trust myself. I was on the school board that same year, it's 15 years. And we went through all of this. The school board is mostly advisory, the way I understand it. And I think the teacher should be given the prerogative of what they're teaching. If you have an objection because you think it's something inappropriate, then I think you have every right to bring it up. But I don't think that we, as community members with our diverse jobs and professions, should be telling people of other professions what to do. I wouldn't want anybody telling me what to do in my job. And I don't think you want to tell a teacher what to teach. I don't think. I think we need to trust teachers. They went to school for this. I wouldn't be personally going to tell a teacher how to teach anything. I can't understand half this stuff myself. So I put complete faith in the teachers. If there was be an objection or if a kid comes home with a book and you think, whoa, what is this? You bring it up to the principal and you bring it up to the teacher.
Thank you, Mr. Weber, that was.
And I guess I probably should be remiss because we're trying to avoid having a debate or discussion with the public. So just please make sure to address your comments to the board as opposed to each other. You know, the school board's not at time for a debate. Even though we value your comments, we're just trying to keep this as focused as possible.
As a reminder, remember this is an elective for 11th and 12th graders who are starting to make their own decisions and will be going on to. So that is the other thing to remember. And it is actually tied to UW Parkside with the learning goals and objectives. So there's, there's things that I added. But there's also, you know, in talking with the teacher that we discussed about this. But it's also, there are some things that, you know, with the pairing with the course that is really kind of expecting the course to be.
Does anyone else in the public that has comments on this agenda topic? All hearing done. Board members, then I entertain a motion to approve the adoption of this course, the ethnic studies course at the high school.
Don't move.
Have a second?
Second.
Any motions to be made in a second? Any further discussion?
I'll just say to the comment that was just made, you know, yeah, Burlington is a very small community and you don't have a lot of diversity here. But I think you're selling kids short today. Kids are more accepting and tolerant of other races, sexual orientations, religions today than when I was in school, never was in school, sorry, when you were in school, when you taught. Just in general, I'm sorry. But you need to give people some more benefit of the doubt. And to think that people are just going to leave this community living in a box, not understanding the plight of, you know, black, brown, whatever. I just, I can't stand for comments like that because kids today are more tolerant and accepting today than they were.
Ten, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years.
Yeah, so.
Okay, hold on. Any other board comments? All hearing, no more discussion. I'll entertain, or let's vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay? All right. Julie and Julie, thank you for presenting.
All right, just actually real quick. If this course does run in the fall, can we have a, I guess I do, report from you, see kind of how, for both of you, whatever, I don't care. But I guess how the tone was in the class, what, what kids were interested in, what they weren't interested in, things like that.